I apologize for not making the last meeting.
Okay.
Headbutt issues.
Good evening. Seeing Quorum, the Chair opens up the Mashpee Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, November fifteenth, 7:00 PM. Here at Mashpee Town Hall, sixteen Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I'd just like to remind everybody that we're being recorded and video graphed. And if you have the opportunity to address the board, please do so with the microphone. I'd like to invite everybody to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have in our packet, November first minutes. Okay. Anybody have any comments? None that entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, we have public hearing at 7:10. Do you think we can do the knockabout beer real quick?
I don't know about that. It's a whole new plan. You could, you could...
This isn't just a vote on whether to...
Right.
Okay.
Looking to get a vote on whether it needs a public hearing, and then if you say no, then looking to get you to actually act on it tonight.
Okay. Want to do the bill for land court reporter?
Sure. Good idea. This is the new format that you end up signing is for $235. The billing is attached.
Okay. I entertain a motion to pay $235 for our subscription to land court reporter.
Make a motion to pay $235 to our subscription to land court reporter.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We usually do this at the very, very end, but maybe we can do it now. The nitrogen results for South Cape Village. So when they, when they are out of compliance, what do we do, Tom?
Well, depends on how far out of compliance. If you're way out of compliance, like over ten, the board has asked them to come in and explain themselves. And sort of put some jawboning to work. But as I indicated, the last time this was discussed, the, they have hired Weston and Sampson to do a redesign of the plant to try to make it more effective at removing nitrogen consistently. And that's still ongoing.
Okay, so they're in, they're in redesign?
Yeah, they're looking to add some additional facilities there to make it work. And this is, I've had, you know, this is the same reports you had here on your last agenda. I haven't got any new reports since then, so.
Okay.
Usually they seem to come in like the day after your planning board meeting, so.
Ah.
Late.
Alright. Okay, we'll leave them on, and we'll just...
Even though they sign that special permit.
And there's no, there's nothing else on the correspondence. We, you do have the usual, you know, sandwich following the ZBA hearing notices, but nothing about zoning articles like you saw on last year's, last month's, last meeting's agenda, so.
Mm-hmm.
They don't list those unless it's a zoning amendment. And no waterways licenses.
Alright, is it, um, do we expect people here for Oakway Highlands?
No, as a matter of fact, Jacques is out of town. He's out of the country, actually, although he indicated that he might be seeking an inspection from Charlie. That's why he asked me for Charlie's phone number and an email. Although I did get an email today, I think, Charlie, you got it copied on that from Catherine Lauren, indicating that there were a number of problems with their curb cut off of the grass road that she was gonna give him a week to fix them, or she was gonna pull the curb cut permit on that one.
They dug out the street.
Yeah, it was a water line or something, yeah.
And they left it down about three, four inches for days. You drive over, you go boom. There was no signs, and they had stone in the front, and they, I don't know what they did with it, but it's all gone. You know, they're supposed to put stone for the trucks to come out, but that cut they did in the street, they haven't even filled it. I mean, it's filled now, but it's still like an inch long. It's sinking on the right-hand side. It's sinking down about three inches now.
What should be done would be a temporary, it's gotta be, trench has gotta be compacted first, so it doesn't settle.
Yeah.
But then put temporary mix in there just to take it over the winter or whatever, and then put a final course next spring when they can take it out and do it properly.
But there's no, there's no snow fence or bills are strong to open it, you know, and I mean, it's pretty flat, and they got it graded pretty good, but I just didn't like the way they cut the, the street open.
Yeah.
I think that was for water lines, so I can get Andy Marks to bug him or something.
I don't know what it was for, but they could've done a better job in, you know, packing it down and stuff. It's a lot better now than the first three days. And it was, I think they did it on a Friday, so the weekend was like, wow.
Did you catch all that? Okay, and under Chairman's report, I'll just do a really quick. The job advertisement for the town planner was posted.
Oh, really?
The applications are due the twenty-first of this month.
Alright, good.
So, um, the town manager expects that maybe the first week in December, there'll be some type of interview or something like that. And I have down that Joe and Dennis were gonna be part of this election committee. I mean, the town manager has the authority to appoint, but anyways, you'll be part of this election to make a recommendation.
And he mentioned the town planner participating?
I don't, I don't think so.
Really?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't hear that from, from him. And I didn't ask for it. I didn't think that that was something that you wanted to do.
I can't imagine why not. Who else better to interview somebody for my job?
Yeah, no, I, I'll...
That's an awful short turnaround, though. I mean, they didn't advertise it until last week, in two weeks.
Yeah.
Well...
Doesn't sound like much. Words gonna get in there.
Well, it's something.
Right. If they, even if they don't get any qualified people, they reopen it. And they increase their, their advertising, so.
Yeah.
But we got it posted, so it's, it's on the website. I don't know where else it is. I don't know if it was written in the newspaper.
It was supposed to be in APA, online, job site, as well as Globe and The Times and...
I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't ask. I got it posted. It's supposed to be advertised November second, starting November second. But online, I saw the date November ninth. So I don't know if, you know, it ran in the newspaper on the second or what.
I didn't see the newspaper. Well, I don't know what...
But if you only get one applica, if we only get one application, we'll ask.
Yeah.
So, just getting the schedule and getting it posted, I had to press pretty hard, so. So that's Chairman's report. Alright, so seeing the appointed time is here, the Chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing. Is there a public hearing notice?
There is.
I have two public hearings at 7:10?
I have two public hearing notices.
So I'm gonna open up, uh...
They're both for 7:10, 'cause they're both essentially the same change. One is to your special permit regs, the other one's the subdivision regs.
So the Chair opens up the following two public hearing notices. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q, the Mashpee Planning Board will conduct a public hearing regarding amendment to the Board's rules and regulations in subdivision of land on Wednesday, November fifteenth. That's tonight, 2017, at 7:30 in Mashpee Town Hall.
Seven-ten, I hope it says.
It said seven-thirty.
Oh, my God.
Was this what was published in the newspaper?
Um, mine say, oh, look, look at that. Now this, the special permit hearing notice says seven-ten. Planning Board, I mean, regs, one says seven-thirty, so maybe you can just do the special permit ones then. I didn't, the agenda hasn't been to seven-ten. It must be a...
Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, forty-A, Section nine, the Mashpee Planning Board will conduct a public hearing regarding amendments to the Board's special permit regulations on Wednesday, November fifteenth, 2017, at seven-ten in Mashpee Town Hall. Said amendments revising Section V dash dot G dot, adding a new subsection four. With regard to notice to military organizations on Joint Base Cape Cod may be viewed at the office of the town clerk or obtained at the office of the Planning Board at Mashpee Town Hall submitted by Mary E. Wagan, Chair Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, October twenty-seventh, 2017, Friday, November third, 2017.
So, an explanation. This comes out of a study that was done in cooperation with the base and the four surrounding towns in the Cape Cod Commission relative to providing notice to the various organizations on the base about projects within a certain area. You all have a copy of the map. It's black and white. This green one here indicates the area. It's basically within the ACO zone, near the, the flight path area, as well as an area up Route one thirty where the helicopters run and some safety zones around the base. So when a project fell within one of these green areas, then notice would be required to be sent to the organizations indicated on the amendment that you have there. Those being the Executive Drake, Director of Joint Base Cape Cod, the Commander of Camp Edwards, Commanding Officer of the Coast Guard Base Cape Cod, the Commander of one-hundred-and-second Intelligence Wing, it is now, Commander of the Sixth Space Warning Squadron, and the Commanding Officer, Coast Guard Air Station Cape Cod. And they all have their addresses listed in this proposed amendment. And that was something that was agreed to be done by the four surrounding towns at the request of the military. And it was actually about a year and a half ago, finally got around to checking my list of things to do, and that's, that's one that was on it, so. Looking to see if the Board will agree to amend their special permit regulations. These are your regulations, not the zoning by law, so you do the amendment after a public hearing to include those required notices.
Alright, is there any board member that has a comment? Anything from our engineer or town planner? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, so, you want me to keep this public hearing open or close it?
I can close this one, 'cause the other one was a separate public hearing. I just put the wrong time on it, so.
I think we have to have a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So let me take a vote to amend our special permit regulations as proposed?
Make a motion to amend our special permit regulation as opposed.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
So that was just for the first one, the top one?
That was the special permit regs, yes, yeah.
So that, we'll have to do at seven-thirty, the Planning Board rules and regs.
Seven-thirty, yeah, and I'm sure that's my error in doing that, 'cause the Board voted to do seven-ten. I think I probably had an old notice that I forgot to change the time on, and, you know, the usual cut and paste job.
Evergreen is seven-twenty, though?
Yeah. So I'm gonna give you a, um, a status report on the Greenway and Mashpee Commons Trail License and Bridge Project. And the CPC. So, and I'll start with the CPC. So the CPC meets on Thursday. So I'll give you guys an update afterwards. They don't, they're not gonna vote on the applications, but I'll, I'll give you an update before we schedule a meeting to vote. And one of those is the footbridge over the Quashnet River, one of those applications. It's now being managed by the Director of, the DPW Director, Catherine Lauren. Charlie, I don't think you were asked to come to tomorrow night's CPC meeting, right?
No.
I think Drew is going. And then, I don't have, I only have one copy of this, but I wanted to pass it around. So I was at the housing, the Cape Housing Institute today. And if you look, it's not a great map, but if you look, this is the draft regional land use vision map from the Cape Cod Commission. And I can send this one this way. No, this one's different. It's this one. And I, I'm a little confused about, it has to do with the RPP. So Heather Harper, who's the, the community design person and a, and housing specialist, is doing all sorts of housing work on a regional basis for the Commission. And they're picking out on the Cape, Activity Centers. That already have infrastructure and capacity for multifamily and high-density zoning. And what they might do, and this is through that RPP process, I don't know if you've heard any of this, but it kinda sounds like they're gonna give, you know, you have a growth incentive zone in these areas, it's almost like they're gonna give, proactively give relief to those areas. And I'm just kind of wondering if, um, oh, see, it is. Isn't that, isn't that Mashpee Commons?
It's Mashpee Commons and more, down to the industrial part.
Isn't that Mashpee Commons?
Yeah.
So Mashpee Commons has been identified preliminary as a regional land use area. So you can see it. You can pass that to Dennis. I think that's, I think that's the rotary. So, reason why I'm bringing it up is if, in our discussions with Mashpee Commons, if we were thinking that something was gonna get captured or required by the RPP, right? We might wanna codify it locally, because I think these yellow centers are gonna get relief from the RPP. Do you know what I'm saying?
So previously, the towns had to designate those centers, and the Board declined to until we had a comprehensive plan update, and now they're gonna ignore the Planning Board and do it themselves? Is that what you're hearing?
So, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
So, in other words...
Let's say.
The Cape Cod Commission is gonna take our responsibility and hand over to the Commons?
Well, you know how like each, our local comprehensive plan, we have all those chapters? Let's say transportation.
Yeah.
Let's say there's mitigation required because of a proposal coming in, and you had to do some type of transportation mitigation, right? Well, if you have like a growth incentive zone, you can have your town set what the offset is kinda before the developer comes in.
Well, we already do have that, no way.
No. The only one in the Cape, I believe, is in Hyannis downtown.
Hyannis and Yarmouth has one.
Yarmouth has one? On twenty-eighth?
But it, 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 the sentence I heard was that these would be areas that would have Cape Cod Commission relief from certain things. So we just have to be really careful if, do you know what I'm saying? Like if, if, as through this RPP process, what happens is these areas are given some type of jurisdictional relief or from, from the Cape Cod Commission, what you would normally have as a DRI.
Yeah.
If that's something that we wanted in that area, we might wanna think about codifying it locally.
So what does a town get out of this?
Less mitigation funds.
Yeah. I have to think about this. This is a...
This is, yeah, this is a red flag for me.
Yeah.
So, and it should be a red flag for every town on the Cape. If they were counting on them meeting their affordable housing goals because of that regional policy plan, and relief is given right in the area that you would target high-density housing, right? Then you're not, you're going against, you're adding more units, but no affordable units, so you're actually going backwards on your percentage.
This, this reminds me like if I lived in the, like, the city, like Somerville.
Yep.
They had a lot of land that was polluted and was sitting there for years, and the town, the, the city of Somerville made special deals to develop and everything. He was gonna clean up, and they gave him all these extra rights, and, but they got affordable housing and that other thing. But, I mean, that, that's what reminds me of like, if we lived in a big city, we had a lot of vacant land that nobody wanted to touch because there was no incentives. I don't think we, I gotta think about this. I don't like this.
You have to think about this, and, you know, I'm wondering if maybe it's, it's, it might be a good time to ask Paul Nitzwicky to come in?
And explain.
And talk about the RPP process?
They also make the argument for the growth incentive zones as concentrating your development so that it, it, it's more advantageous for traffic, transportation, public transit, infrastructure, you know, high-speed internet and what have you. You can direct it to that one location, and it's not as costly, even with your wastewater treatment, if you target specific zones, so they make the argument for that as well.
But why can't we do that ourselves? I mean, why do we need Cape Cod Commission to stick their hand and we...
But the word concentration doesn't make any sense unless you're eliminating it somewhere else.
Right.
It's just increasing development. It's not concentrating. It's increasing in one spot.
I agree with that.
So like, right, so the Yarmouth giz, we had to, we have to, in Yarmouth, we have to undevelop some lots.
Yeah.
Right? We allow more density in some areas, and then we have to undevelop, basically buying lots for open space.
I like, may I, what may I have?
Maybe, I'm, yeah, before, before, yeah.
Somebody from the Cape Cod Commission come in?
Um, and have them kinda go through, what, what's the RPP, and what direction do they think? What are the major changes? And if it's this, then let's talk about it a little bit.
I wanna know what the benefit is to the town.
That's right.
But usually the towns lobby for, you know, the towns approach the Commission and request a growth incentive zone.
That's the way the regs are set up now. The town has to apply for it.
Apply for it. To just, you know, force it down your throat is, seems out of sequence. We don't even have an up-to-date comprehensive plan, so, you know, I think it'd be better for us to, you know, have a comprehensive plan, and then if it followed suit, that's one thing, but...
I remember that there's some reg, and I don't know if it's the RPP or some other regulation, the land use vision map used to have to come from a planning board.
That's, that's the one the Planning Board declined to do because you're waiting for your comprehensive plan, yeah.
They changed it so that it could come from the Board of Selectment or the Planning Board. And I objected to that at their public hearing, and I lost that push. Because I, I, their, their argument was, well, if you didn't have an active planning board, right, then you're, there should be some entity in the town that should be able to request that. And I'm like, yeah, but what if you have an active planning board that's in disagreement with your Board of Selectment, right? So it was like, uh...
Now all the towns have active planning boards. There's no such thing in Cape Cod.
Anywho, so, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll call Paul and see if they'll send somebody. And then, very quickly bef, I know we're, we're past the seven-twenty mark, but December second, isn't it December second? Or is it December fourth?
About the meeting?
Yeah, when's the next meeting for the, um...
That calendar, Jen.
Next meeting for what?
The Saturday before...
Right, yeah, the Mashpee Commons meeting is December second.
At the library. It's December second?
Yeah, ten AM.
Ten o'clock at the library.
And ours is at December sixth, our meeting, right?
Right. It's the following Wednesday, and I think, are we starting at six or seven that night?
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
I mean, you haven't changed it.
But we can go to both. I'm, I'm going on Saturday.
Then we coordinated with them to have an additional meeting at the tribal building?
Great.
For December eleventh.
Okay.
I believe that one's at six o'clock.
That's awesome. And is that open to the public?
It is.
Is that gonna be in the big room?
Uh, probably the gymnasium.
It's probably gonna be the big, it is gonna be like the only room that's gonna be able to hold everybody.
We coordinated with the Mashpee Commons to have a similar...
I like to cover to that, too.
It's like a visioning session at the tribal headquarters, which I think is great. Did you get all that, Jen? Right, alright. So thanks, thank you in the audience for your patience. Seeing that appointed time has arrived, the Chair opens up. The public hearing for Evergreen Energy LLC, location is five-eight-eight Main Street, accessory, accessories map nineteen, block ten. The request is approval of definitive subdivision plan for twelve lot industrial slash commercial subdivision. This is continued from November first, 2017. Hi.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Board, Mike Ford, Counsel for Evergreen. This is a continued hearing. I'm here with Mike McGrath, the land surveyor and site engineer for the subdivision. What we'd like to do tonight is to go over some of the issues that were raised by Mr. Rowley and Mr. Fadala and the Board with respect to the subdivision at the first hearing. And so, Mr. McGrath is passing out some plans that were responsive to some of those comments. And Mike, why don't we start by having you update the Board as to how we responded to Mr. Rowley's comments?
I assume he's work.
Well, we'll get a, we'll get a indication if it doesn't, so go right ahead.
My name is Mike McGrath. I'm a registered engineer and professional land surveyor, and my office did respond to Mr. Rowley's comments and by email, and we sent copies of plans that were revised to reflect what he pointed out was, was appropriate. And so we have submitted revised definitive plans, revised planning profiles. Most of them would be considered details, like we show concrete monuments to be set at, at the street corners on the construction plans, not on the definitive, but there's a note on the definitive. There's some details of the construction of the catch basins that were, that we've adjusted. So I believe that we met all his comments today. He did ask for three more small things, but they, it came in too late for us to respond, but I think they're so minor as the Board could easily condition approval. It's, um, to be, he wanted a couple more monuments, which is not a big deal. He wanted to have me adjust where the pavement hits the catch base, and I showed the concrete all the way up to the surface. all the way up to the surface, and he's right, we should have the pavement, we should lower the concrete at the edge of the rim so that there, the pavement is, uh, the finished surface. And there was one other detail that I think was, uh, uh, very minor, but, uh...
Road, road bounds.
Pardon me?
It's just the...
Oh, it was the size of the post, yeah. The posts were inappropriate, well, incorrectly labeled on one of the sections, the post on the guardrail. For the planning boards, um, we have guardrails around the cul-de-sac because the cul, the center of the cul-de-sac, which is oversized, uh, is in fact the drainage system. And so, since it's below the finished grade, we surrounded it with a guardrail. And Charlie pointed out that one of the post, the dimensions of the post is not correct. So, I, I believe that, uh, as far as the plans and construction plans, I think that we're, I think they're at appropriate stage to be approved.
So, the other, uh, issue, Madam Chair, unless you want to have perhaps Mr. Rowley comment at this point?
I'm just saying a third item on Charlie's email had to do with, uh, additional street monuments need to be shown.
It was just a reference to the discussion we had at the previous meeting, just pointing out that, um, on the revised plans that I got, which we got last time, which I had just a minute to review, and I pointed them out when we had a discussion, I was just reiterating that again as a reference, that's all. There weren't additional monuments, it was the same ones that weren't shown. But I guess what they've done now is, is taken the location of the monuments completely off the plan and just left a note, which I don't think is compliant with your rules and regulations. Because I believe your rules and regulations say to show the locations where they'll be set.
Okay, so what you're saying is the plan needs to be amended to show the locations of the monuments?
Yeah, they were all there, uh, except for six, and they were pointed out at the last time, and, uh, if they had simply put the, uh, squares on those locations, we would have been home.
Well, um, to the planning board, uh, I, I've testified a lot in Land Court, uh, and at Superior Court about boundaries, and if a surveyor puts on a plan a concrete bound to be set, it's assumed by the court that he set them. So, what I did is I put all the monuments onto the planning profiles because, uh, I didn't, if, if something happens in the future and the bounds don't get set and they're shown on the plan at the registry, then theoretically I've set them even if I haven't. So, that's why we prefer to put them on the planning profiles. So, they are clearly shown on the planning profiles.
But those don't get recorded, so who knows about them?
It seemed to me that you're still responsible for them, Mike.
Yeah.
Your stamp is on the plan, no one else is, is. And this is a, a common thing that's done every subdivision plan that I've ever seen come before the planning board.
Well, if it's a planning board regulation, well...
Well, if the planning board insists that I put them on, I'll put them on.
Yeah, we're gonna insist. I, I think that's what we said last time.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry if we miscommunicated with you, but that was our intention, that they be placed.
All right.
On the plan.
Clearly, if it's in your regs, we'll put them on.
But, so, I will take all the monuments that are shown on the planning profile and put the money on a recordable plan.
And then the status of the water quality report, Mike, you want to just give us the latest on that?
I met with the Board of Health and I presented a water quality plan, and they approved the water quality plan as far as the words are concerned. They did not approve a waiver of the wells, and I asked them specifically, could we put the wells in, uh, prior to the road construction, and they said yes. However, the referral that came from the Board of Health didn't say that. I've talked to the health agent yesterday and he actually asked me for a third well. And what I had done in the meantime was I put on the planning profiles, cop, a location of two wells, and he would, uh, asked us to put three wells in. The issue about putting the wells in is that the, the, it's, it's more that it's very difficult to put these wells in because it's over 50 feet to the groundwater, and, um, the wells have to be in the middle of the woods. So, we, uh, we've agreed, uh, with Tom Fadala to put in the three wells. We will have to construct access because the, the well driver that's going to be putting the wells in is a very large piece of equipment because one of the wells in your regulation has to be 100 foot deep. The, uh, 100 foot deep measured from the surface of the ground. So, we've agreed that we'll put in three wells and we'll put them in, uh, before the appeal period expires so that you will have copies of the logs of the wells. If, we may not have the, uh, test results because the test results take slightly longer, but we could easily get you the test results for the more, more common constituents. You have in your regulations some very expensive constituents, uh, but we will do what the bylaw requires.
So, uh, here's where we find ourselves, Madam Chair. The Board of Health had no issue with, um, the wells being installed at the time of the construction of the road. However, the zoning bylaw, um, doesn't provide for that, and of course, you have to make sure that the zoning bylaws complied with. So, um, given the fact that we've got to do considerable clearing to get the well rigs in there, and we'd like to keep this thing moving, what we're suggesting to you is if, uh, everything else is in order, that we'd like you to go ahead and approve the subdivision if you find that we meet the subdivision regulations, um, with those additional things. And, uh, but not endorse the plan until such time as we actually get the wells in, this will give us some time to do it, but allow the, uh, the appeal period to start running. And not endorse the plan until such time as we've completed those wells and, and reported back, uh, to the Board of Health and to the planning board, and that would be the planning board's leverage to make sure that they got in. But it will allow us to keep moving, um, in that direction, and, um, it's going to be a considerable undertaking on those wells, but we appreciate the fact that the zoning bylaw requires that they be in before you actually approve the plan.
Endorse the plan.
Endorse the plan.
Actually, what it requires is they be in and the results of the testing be done as part of the application for the plan. So, um, what, certainly my understanding with Mike was that, um, the board could agree to, uh, forego them as part of the application, and as long as they came in, the wells are installed and the results of all of those testing, there, there are some expensive and, uh, some that take a while to get done before the, uh, plan is signed.
That was my understanding as well.
And I assume you're not going to construct anything in the winter other than the wells, so...
That was my understanding as well.
That may be a bit longer than, you know, certainly the 20-day appeal period.
Yeah, do we set ourselves up for any type of liability if we approve something and don't endorse it?
Well, no, I mean, uh, if the applicant is agreeing to do that, we put it, we're going to put that as a, as a condition.
We'll put it on the record that we understand that any vote to approve is contingent upon that.
Right, the, the notice of decision of the plan will have the conditions, and that will be one of the conditions is that the wells will have to be installed and the mon, and the, uh, results of testing done per Section 174-27 of the zoning bylaw prior to the signature of the plan. Put that right on the thing that we file with the town clerk. And that's what they have, the 20-day appeal period, actually, the only notice goes to the applicant of the 20-day appeal, for them to appeal that decision, uh, the buddies don't get the appeal notice.
It's something that we're on the record tonight, Madam Chair, agreeing to as a condition.
All right.
Did the location of the wells also get put on the plan?
They, uh...
There's a separate plan that came in with two wells shown on it, um, that you don't all have, I just made a couple copies, but, um, part of the discussion with Glenn Harrington was that they're both down gradient and...
We agreed to put one...
An up gradient to determine what the impact is, yeah. Whatever, but there, there were two down here and...
Yes, you did, Mike.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna put it, when, what happens is that the well will be somewhere at the rear corner of lot 2 and 3.
Yeah.
Obviously, what happens is we'll go out, and if there's a tree right there...
Yep.
We will give you a location survey as we, as we monitor it.
Want to see where they are, man? I just marked them up with circles, three of them, two on the lower side and one on the upper side.
Yeah, because the Board of Health decided, even though the bylaw says two, they'd like three, we're going to do the third.
So, is that going to be on the plan that we're going to endorse?
No, not on the recordable plan, no.
Okay.
It's a separate issue.
But it will be on a plan in your file and it's a condition of the approval.
Come in with, uh, you know, a, a plan of where they are, once you've got them in, you'll survey them in and, and along with the results of the testing and well logs and all the rest. That'd be the package you'd be looking for before you sign the plan.
So, um, do you have any more comments before I go to Charlie?
I provided to Tom this evening, we had a, a draft covenant, but it was unsigned, and I provided a, assigned one to him this evening. We executed. So, the road covenant is in, Madam Chair.
And does that, I have a note that, um, it is going to be modified to reflect that it is subject to the installation of the monitoring wells?
Yeah, I think, um... I think, I think we've come up with this other way of securing that rather than the road covenant, just because of the way the...
You don't get a signed plan without them.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to go to Charlie? Okay.
I just have something in the back of my mind and I don't have the answer. I just want to be sure that there is no issue with respect to a timeframe, that if you vote to simply approve it, that you've got time enough to wait to sign the plan so that it can be approved, that's all. I don't think there is, but I'm not positive of it, so I can't tell you for sure. Give me a few minutes just to look at the state statute, I may be able to let you know.
We know you can't sign it in less than 20 days, we don't know how much time you have after that.
I know, but I'm just wondering, after, I don't, I don't think there's an issue.
I don't think there is a, I don't know, you don't know of any kind of deadline for signing a plan. We have deadlines for holding a hearing, and deadlines for closing a hearing and making a decision, but not really for signing a, a plan.
Okay, well, I'll take this opportunity to open it up to the public, is there anybody here that has any comments? And board members, Robert? David?
I'm fine.
I like the open space, the best.
You can thank the Cape Cod Commission for that, they didn't give them any break.
David?
Just one thing, there's only four of you sitting on this, because Dave and Rob were not at the previous sitting of this hearing, so it should only be the four of you on this end that should take a vote on it.
But we're feeling pretty good about it. Yep.
Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I had a quick discussion with Tom Fadala that you're requiring a very, very deep well, and, uh, one of the things you may want to talk to someone like at United States Geological Survey, because what actually happens is there's some water that will probably never reach the estuaries or the ocean, and it may well be that that water is what we're going to end up sampling. And the other point, if you drive a well 100 foot down, you're going to have, you may get, the constituents are so dilutive that you won't notice it, you may want to revise that, that regulation to have it more in line with DEP standards of monitored wells, which is like 15 feet of screen. You have it 100 foot deep.
Well, they're a pair of wells, one is six foot below the groundwater table and the other one is 100 foot deep at each location, right?
Perhaps you should revise it.
I, I agree, that was written back in the 1980s, uh, it's a...
Just for the thought for your regulations.
It's in the zoning, so, well, yeah, it's in the zoning. So, it'd be a zoning amendment for next October if you're going to do that.
You might want to also get input from the Board of Health on that, I would think.
Sure. Now, the 15-foot screen makes sense. Know a lot more than we did 25 years ago, at least I do. You're on the mark. Most of those, so those monitoring wells that you see for projects that, uh, you know, have discharge permits from the EP, you know, that's what you get, you don't, you know, South Cape Village, that's what you get, you're not getting 100-foot deep wells required for those.
How you feeling, Charlie?
81V, I think it was, talks about the endorsement and so forth. It implies that as soon as the 20-day appeal period up, that the planning board shall endorse the plan. Doesn't say that you can wait or you shouldn't wait, uh, it's silent, but I think the implication is that if the plan is ready, that you get it signed. But if you have an agreement that way, I don't see any violation with respect to the state law from what I see.
They say it applies it, it doesn't state it.
I think is the implication, yeah.
And that's a typical situation, too, unless there's some other reason, but I think, I think we're using this as a mechanism to accomplish something that was supposed to be done before even applied, so...
If, after the expiration of 20 days, if there's been no appeal, the planning board shall cause to be made upon the plan a written endorsement of its approval.
Yeah. We're going to have part of our decision that we're not going to endorse it until...
Right, what I, what I would, well, you make the, the motion, but what I have is three items on Charlie's email that, uh, about the concrete ring around the casting is on the basins, uh, move the notations about six by eight, made them eight by eight, and then, uh, show all the, uh, street monuments need to be set, to be set, and then the fourth would be, uh, plan won't be signed until the board gets the, uh, results of the, the monitoring wells, uh, required by 174-27, and I forget the subsection, G or something like that.
Did you do the post and rail fence?
Yeah, that was, that was the second one about, uh, they're six by eight, should be, should be eight by eight, is what Charlie's saying.
So, four conditions?
Yeah, four conditions, those four.
I can state that the applicant agrees with all of those, Madam Chair.
Okay, great, any comments on the four conditions? All right, so, I think I'm, we have to close the public hearing.
May I most, we close the public hearing.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I entertain a motion to accept and approve this definitive, um, definitive, is it subdivision plan?
Yep.
With the following four conditions, Tom, can you read those four conditions again?
Okay, uh, they may be written slightly differently when I actually put it on it, but the, the, they are Charlie's, uh, "Shall the cement concrete ring around the castings for basins and manholes is brought up to the top of the binder course only, the wearing surface should then cover the concrete once it is in place." Two, "Remove the notation in the post and rail fence detail about six by eight posts, it's in conflict with the handwritten dimension shown on one of the posts," that's part I will take out, uh, should be eight by eight is what I'll leave in. And then, uh, three, "And from the previous meeting," again, I won't say that, "But, uh, street monuments need to be shown on the plan as bounds to be set." And, um, I'm going to leave it at that, the four and the, and the two at the end of the first curve, I don't think there's any shown anywhere around, uh, the road, there's a bunch of curves on this plan.
The other recommendation was that bounds be shown on the one side of that pathway leading to the open space. On the plan, we saw last time, they had actually bounded all six corners of that, which I didn't ask for, I only asked for three, so if they want to put those on, it would be helpful, too.
Those extra monuments are requirement to put a conservation restriction on, which is a requirement.
Yeah, because we're going to put a conservation restriction, we're going to put all those in.
So, then, um, well, you need that for the conservation restriction, so I don't know if we need to require, because in your regs, it requires the bounding of the street. And so, I'm pretty sure that's all we need to put in the condition there.
I was unaware of the conservation restriction, that's why I made a suggestion about bounding one side of the path, but if it's going to be that way, um, you're right.
Got to be able to find it, yeah.
Monument, the whole thing, so...
Right, and the fourth will, condition will be that, uh, the, uh, plan will not be endorsed until such time as the board has received, uh, the, uh, results of the, uh, installation and testing of the monitoring wells, three monitoring wells, uh, per Section 174-27, whatever subsection of the zoning bylaw. of the zoning bylaw.
So I entertain a motion, the approval with those four conditions?
Make a motion, so be.
Second?
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was the four of you. Could I get the chair to, I'll, I'll write in the stuff I'm supposed to write in tomorrow, but I can just get you to sign off.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. We appreciate you working with us on this and giving us that ability to move forward on those wells. Thank you.
All right, it was good seeing you, Michael.
Oh, by the way, Mike, you forgot to bring your notary stuff, so we need you.
Did you leave me on the next?
Yeah.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Sorry for all the details.
Okay, I'll get you.
All right. Bye, Mike.
Now we have another public hearing? No.
Well...
We have a public hearing on the special, the subdivision regulation changed. It was scheduled, actually advertised for 7:30. Unless you want to continue that to later in the meeting and take up knockabout.
Yeah, I, I accept a motion to continue that to 8:05.
Take it.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I made the motion, Jim. I don't think you can make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Out of my jurisdiction.
I think it is. I'm not sure.
I can't. Some, some chairs don't even vote.
No?
They'll only vote when it's a tie.
Really?
Yep. Whoa, whoa, where did that come from?
I found it back there hiding.
That's great.
Good evening, Peter Myrna with Knockabout Beer, here to talk about our special permit and request to modify that special permit.
Okay, so our applicant is Knockabout Beer Company LLC. The location is 13 Lake Avenue Mashpee, S. S. Map 27 Block 46. The request is approval of a special permit modification for site plan change to Knockabout Beer Company. The modification to retaining walls, patio and rain gardens. The board needs to vote on whether a public hearing will be required first before we can recognize the project proponent.
So what you have in your package is you have the new three sheets of site plan. The, the first sheet is just a cover sheet. The second sheet, it was just the original condition of the property and the third is the new proposed site plan. You also have the revision to site plan that you approved in September to compare it with, as a separate, as a separate sheet.
So what do you guys think? Think we need a public hearing on this?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay, I entertain that motion.
Make a motion, we don't need a public hearing.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now I can recognize the project proponent.
Good evening, Peter Myrna with Knockabout Beer. Thank you for taking some time tonight to review this. We're getting very close over on the property and would like to request your time to review these adjustments to our site plan. Like Tom had mentioned, we have provided a copy of the prior plan that was approved last time by your team, as well as the three sheets that are part of the revised site plan. Third page is the revision that will show the changes. The first page is the cover sheet, as Tom said. Second page is what the property looked at originally and page three is the requested site updates.
So you want to be comparing the third sheet of that package to the separate sheet that looks like there, which is what you've already approved.
And major changes are basically us reducing the size of the immediate patio around the building itself and eliminating the big retaining walls that were going to be required to hold back the grade difference and reducing that down and then moving some of that outdoor space to the left side of the building and up onto the hill so that we can take advantage of the views of Lake Mashpee Wakeby.
So point that out, that very last part?
So up top here, on the top left side of the lot?
Yeah.
We've put some flat areas that are basically leveling out the grade of those sections, kind of trying to work with the grade, not move a lot of dirt, but to take advantage of putting some flat spaces for folks to enjoy the view of the water as well as the nature around that area there. And then on the right side of the building, we reduced down the walls by basically not changing the, the grade of the hill, maintaining what's there, reinforcing the railroad tie wall that was there with either new railroad ties or some stone, either cinder block or concrete depending on what is required. And then adding these landing areas on the top left side of the property.
In the, looking at it out in the field, where they're cutting back to is the existing slope that's got a lot of vegetation holding it in place with, like you just said, some, some wooden...
Ties.
Ties, tie, tie wall at the bottom of it there. And effectively leaving it the way it is and then they're doing a shell surface in the area where you're going to see, we're going to see all of those cobblestones or stone surface there. So as a result, they don't necessarily need all those rain gardens to take care of runoff because it's not increasing off of the hard surface. But I leave that to Charlie to decide in terms of drainage issues.
So those level areas, will they be grass?
Shells.
Shell, oh, okay.
Well, you're talking about ones up on the hill or?
Up on these level surfaces up here will be either shells or another natural surface.
Yeah, you probably want grass or something like that there.
Yeah, I don't think shells would be.
We would love shells.
Shells up there aren't natural.
I think that would be awkward.
Yeah.
Shells around the building, yeah, but for some reason...
We would have no problem putting grass up there or another natural surface, so. We want to feel very natural. That's why we're trying to work with the grades that are there instead of building big 10-foot-tall retaining walls and having that look a little daunting and out of place. We wanted to embrace the natural curvatures of the hill itself and not necessarily move a lot of dirt when we could rather add a little here, take a little there and level out areas and connect them with more natural paths or stepways.
So how many trees are up in that area?
There's, we're going to try to keep the big beech tree.
Yeah.
There's some other smaller trees that are in this cluster. I don't have an exact count, but there's a lot of scrub pines that are dying and falling down that are probably a safety hazard anyway and we're going to try to maintain as much of that natural vegetation as we can.
Are we going to hit any clearing?
Currently, the area is outside of the, the, excuse me, the riparian area for the town conservation and we're not in the natural heritage overlay either, so.
As a matter of fact, they had a letter previously and noted in the proposed decision that they weren't in the natural heritage area and lo and behold, the state changed the maps on August 1st that eliminated most of the natural heritage area in Mashpee including this property, so.
Okay. I was just, I was...
Not even a question now. Yeah, big change.
August, August happened, so.
The only thing I say, Mary, is that those three areas that are shown on the plan, it says level area and it gives you the grade, proposed grade for each one. So the contours are at two-foot intervals here, so you're not seeing the real changes in those grades.
Right.
So it's going to be like three step level areas according to this plan. So there'll be some sloping in between each one. That block where it says proposed, I guess it's sitting areas, schematic only to be field coordinated, special attention will be made to muntua vegetation. In order to level those off, you're going to end up being clearing whatever vegetation is within them. So there won't be much left.
Right.
And if you try to clear around trees and drop down the grade around the trunk of the tree to where roots get exposed?
Yeah.
That tree won't survive. So we've had that issue with South Port lot.
Yeah, in particular, we'd like to try to keep the beech, the beech tree that we have at the top. There's a very beautiful tree.
Then you probably don't want to change the grade. Right now, there's a 214 contour that is down gradient from the tree. Says the level area is going to be cut to 13 and a half, so you're probably going to be maybe six, eight inches below the current grade around the trunk of the tree. That's not going to be good for the roots, so you're probably going to want to think about changing the grade so that it doesn't affect anything around the, the trunk of the tree or even the, the...
The drip line.
Call it the shadow of the, or the drip line of the tree. Because once you do that, you run the risk of destroying it and purple beaches are pretty...
Well, since we're out in the conservation area, we obviously, we, we...
It has nothing to do with conservation. It's just normal, normal tree safety and protection of that.
Well, yes, we'd love to keep that beech tree so we can work with Bracken and the company that will be working with us to do the grading too.
You could put a wall, a little wall around it and keep it...
Yep, keep that.
...that thing and then gray down. I wonder, what about handicap people? How are they going to get up there if they want to go up there?
That's a very good question. We actually were, Bracken and I were talking about that and we were believing, thinking that we could provide access off the parking lot to here up to the first area there.
Okay. You should look into that because somebody will come down on you on that.
So that back landscaping, how much does that come under our jurisdiction?
Well, the site plan is your, into your jurisdiction, so it's all into your jurisdiction. We talked about landscaping though, remember there was that performance bond for landscaping that I'm sure is probably going to be a lot less once, with this version versus the other one with the rain gardens and all the rest, so that's something that will have to be talked about maybe at a later date as to how much that would be, but.
So what we've done and some developments, and there are two members that actually live in these developments, when they take a tree down or they disturb an area, we ask them to replant something that's a high-quality tree that helps with, you know, protecting our groundwater. I'm not an expert at that, but that's what we've asked. Like, oh, that one, you want that down? Then we want something else planted nearby in that area.
And there's also the South Port approach where you go out and look at the trees in advance and decide which ones should be kept and which ones can go.
Well, that's where I'm going.
That may be a little bit much, but...
I didn't know if there was a member of the board that wanted to...
My concerns with cutting into the, you know, cutting into the elevations, I would much rather see you build them up than, than, than cut, cut into the hill at all.
And why is that? Just explain to me.
I know up on top of that area, 13 acres, you know, a little higher up on the hill, from what I've been told, you know, the, the people find a lot of artifacts and such out there, so I, I don't know what's under the ground up there and so cutting into it raises a bit of concern for...
Yeah, I understand that totally. And that's why if you, if you look at the existing grades, which are sort of hard to see, we're pretty close within a foot or two of what's already there, so we're trying to limit the amount of dirt removing totally. So instead of, you know, digging in like we were going to go back and push these walls back where they were 15 feet, whatever it was in certain spaces into the hill, instead we'd rather leave what's there and try to level out this top area as much as we could and the certain areas than have natural sloping between them that kind of mimics what the grade difference is going to be.
You know, the, the, the level area elevations for the lower two are pretty spot-on with the grade of, of the, the land there. It's really the top one where you're cutting it down, which affects the tree and the other issue. Maybe that ought to go to like...
Maybe that doesn't have to be big.
214.5 or something like, as opposed to 213.5. So that way you're right at what's, where the, where the ground is at the tree and don't have to mess with it.
Can you see the water from up there?
Oh, you can.
Yeah, that's sweet. I mean, I like this plan way better than this plan.
Yeah, I appreciate that because we feel it's more in keeping with just the spirit of the lot itself, so.
And no music up there, right?
No. Well, maybe we'll have an acoustic guitar player once in a while, but no, no big bands or anything crazy like that.
Don't put anybody on the top of the hill playing music, please. Oh, man.
Going to be competing with the boom boxes at the parking lot, Town Beach.
Just one other question with respect, with respect again to that food truck location. Why is it 90 degrees to the parking area? Why not make it parallel to the parking so that you're not having to back and fill that truck around?
That's where it was before, again, the turn, yeah.
Well, that truck, I think just so that there was more maneuverability around it to get back behind it and up to those pathways.
How's it get in there?
Oh, we're going to have some sort of gate that will be along the front there.
Is it going to be driving all over the grassed area that's outside the fence or within the fence?
Well, that's a shell area.
All right, I'm sorry. Yep.
Would design review have to look at this or no, that's out of there?
That, that is already, this is the building.
So I, Mike, I guess my question is, you know, the, the note on here for schematic work will be coming, you know, either in the field or with a hardscape plan as far as the final grades of these areas. Is that something that we can submit at time, have Charlie come out and look at it or I just would thought?
Well, I think that sometimes we delegate that to a member to approve. Would that be okay, Tom, if we did that?
Well, we can go through the permit. I mean, again, I didn't write it into this decision because I didn't see it at the time, but again, I think you might want to specify that that third area be at 214.5, which I could write into here. What I did do, because of the, the type of modifications we're talking about, I said here under the conditions, let's see. "Should any further changes to the outside patio and seating area be proposed, including the installation of rain gardens or similar features? The board will allow such changes provided that they are approved by the board, planning board consulting engineer and that four sets of said approved revised plans are filed with the board." In other words, allow Charlie to approve field changes for these plans and, and then just have them filed with the board rather than going through a, a board review, if you want it.
I think the intent of that law was for minor field changes. In other words, if the location of a, what was going to be a overflow leaching pit in order to save a tree could be moved 10 feet and salvage the tree rather than cut the tree because it was right where the pit was supposed to go, that kind of a change could be approved. I would not be comfortable with making approvals of something that is quite schematic at this time. If I could make a suggestion to you?
Yeah.
That the approval that you're talking about tonight be within the area of the building and say within the retaining wall that's proposed and is going to be upgraded.
Okay.
But that at a later date, after a little bit more study and thought is given to those sitting areas and view areas that are beyond that, that they come back with a plan, a specific plan that shows that so you can at least walk out there and see it. I would not be comfortable, especially if there are going to be wholesale changes that don't look like this plan to either me or an individual just approving that because I might not like what they do. I don't want to get in an argument with somebody up there because they like it and I don't. I think it's something that needs to come here.
Well, I don't want to make wholesale changes from what's here. We're, we're very happy if, if we need to adjust that top level and put it, make it 214.5 instead of 213.5.
I wouldn't even suggest that because if this whole thing is schematic to the point where you really don't know right now exactly how it's going to look, that you study it a little more and come back with a definitive plan that the board can look at and they can probably take a look at it the same way in an informal way as they're doing now. And that way, even if it could be rough stakeout in the field, so if somebody goes out and looks at it, they get an idea of what you're going to do.
Yeah, I guess...
To leave it up in here, which just wouldn't be, wouldn't be good.
No, no, totally. And I don't want to do anything that, you know, doesn't make everyone feel comfortable.
I think that's a really good plan. And David, I hate to volunteer you, but I, I think that you have quite a resource here.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I really like the direction that you're going in. I think, and I think your customers will, will really like it too, big time.
So what are you suggesting?
That, just exactly what Charlie said.
Well, he suggested that it come back to the board for that.
With, with, right. With, with, uh, right, with more detail on the one, two, three, four, five, the area that has the five level areas.
Right, yeah.
I don't think it would impact anything that's within the lines of.
I mean, I think all we can do is encourage the project proponent to use our resource, you know, David, to, to figure out, uh.
And Charlie, really?
Yes.
I mean, it's a, it's a grading issue.
You can always call Charlie.
Charlie's been out a few times already.
Yeah, um, do you wanna authorize David and Charlie to work with the project proponent on that, um, area of the plan?
Sure.
You wanna take a vote on that?
I'm gonna authorize David and Charlie to look at the proposal change of the plan.
Regarding the five level areas?
Regarding the five level areas.
That, that, now, that's leading to coming back to the board, though, right, with a formal plan, so.
We're coming back to the board with a formal plan for that area.
I, I think that the applicant needs to have some sort of a plan in mind before he asks David and me to go out there and just look at it. I just don't wanna wander around the woods without any specific ideas.
Yeah, so, so having Bracken come out and stake the areas essentially that we're talking about.
Yeah, and you discuss with them what sort of a more formalized plan you're gonna do so that when we go out to look at it, we'll know what we're looking at, that we aren't guessing about what's gonna be done.
Yep, and, uh, you know, and just to be on, upfront with you guys, you know, we look very similar to what's on here.
Yeah. I like it.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
And I, but I, and I think that this process is gonna make it look, oh, like, just fantastic.
Good, great.
Really, 'cause you're gonna get two more people helping you with it. So, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So, um, you have a special permit decision in front of you, modification decision in front of you that I put together. I'll obviously have to modify it to include that, uh, what you're approving is the area except, uh, the changes except for the, the, uh, five level areas, sit level, sitting areas, and that those are gonna have to come back at another.
Can I just ask you a question about it? So, as long as we get, uh, David and Charlie to come out, once we have a plan, we can bring you guys out, review the plan, look at it in the site, uh, we'd be okay with some sort of areas up here?
Right, and you'll come back with any changes on a plan like this?
Yep.
And we'll do the same thing.
Make sure I understand, yep.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question, Mary?
Yes.
Um, when I was out there, I think one of the first times I was there and looking at the areas that you had cut out for the paving and so forth, uh, we agreed on the base material and we agreed cementing up the concrete covers and all of that. And I was led to believe that the only thing you were gonna do was to pave those areas, that you weren't gonna touch the remaining pavement. Am I wrong on that? Because this plan says all pavement to be resurfaced.
Uh, we were gonna reseal it. That should probably, it should've resealed, it should've not said resurfaced.
Well, that's an entirely different thing than repaving, so maybe the board needs to discuss that.
Okay.
Sealing it simply means you, um, take asphalt and spray it over the surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were gonna re, re-fix the parts that were broken.
Yeah.
Then you would kick, kick hazards, repair those, to, uh, have the correct base layers and, um, asphalt correctly, appropriately, repair the septic work that was done.
Right.
Um, and then to seal everything to give it a consistent look and re-stripe it based on.
That's, that's an entirely different thing than saying that the pavement's to be resurfaced, which was on your original plan and it's on this one, too, so, um, that's a requirement of the special permit, seems to me.
You mean the plan?
So, if you wanna change that to make it simply sealing the existing pavement and patching only the places that were broken up, um, that's different than what was originally approved.
All right, so we need to make that.
Make a, um, make, need to make a determination of whether that's acceptable.
Okay, so.
Well, I mean, the, the new plan says the same thing as the approved plan says to be.
Right, which is, is.
Resurfaced.
Calling for more work than when you have going on in the field.
Correct.
I am fine with reducing the scope of the work on the, on the pavement. Are you fine with it, Charlie?
I found some areas that were quite thin. Um, we did, I did mention to the contractor places that need to be cut out and new mix put in, um, but I can't speak for the rest of the surfaces, other than what's there. It's been there a long time. If they seal it, it may last for a while. I have no idea what the thickness is, so it's gonna be whatever it is.
And we did cut out and patched the places that.
Well, I know, but there are other places that there was, there's been no investigation of the thickness of that mix, so I don't know what's there. It may be okay. It may last a while.
I think it's okay.
But. If you're not concerned about it, then you, you simply need to make that additional change on the special permit.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about it, 'cause it, there's gonna be a quiet period out in that, um.
That, that's okay.
That parking lot, yeah.
Trying to make sure that when I go out there to see things and it says one thing.
Okay.
And I don't see it, I can't make a decision that's contradictory to what the board agreed to.
So, I'm sorry, can you repeat the suggested language that you had?
That the, um, the pavement, uh, be patched and sealed. Existing pavement to be patched and sealed.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I mean, the, the plan, the approved plan already says resurfaced.
Right.
The only one that says resurfaced, can we hold off until the new plan that comes in with the, with the five sitting areas to make that change?
So, you don't have to change a special permit?
So, you don't have to cha, no, so you don't have to change the plans that we're referring to in the decision.
That's fine by me.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine. We'll have the plan updated every so.
Meantime, he might decide to repave the whole thing.
I don't know.
Think a look at.
All right. So, what do you got for us, Tom?
So, um, so I've given you a draft decision here. Most of it is just, uh, you know, blah, blah, blah. Um, by the way, the historic district commission has already certified that this is not subject to approval. They've signed off on a certificate of non-appability.
Okay, great.
So, that, that was done. What I would do is under the conditions, uh, number one, where I'm referring to the plan here, I will say except, uh, for the five sitting areas, uh, which will need to be, uh, to have detailed plans, uh, returned to the board for a public hearing. And, uh, it looks like, um, I will get rid of two because Charlie's not comfortable with that. All right? And, uh, the rest just, uh, is boilerplate conditions remain, et cetera. And, uh, you can see way back down on the bottom, uh, "Any further modification of special permit decision accompanying plans, except it's noted above and conditioned to," which I will delete that part, uh, shall require approval by the board pursuant to provisions of blah, 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 which is the boilerplate that you usually have in there. I tried to make, I tried to make for an easy process for making these minor adjustments out in the field, but I guess that's not gonna work, so that's the way I'll redo this thing. And, um, if you'll trust me to do it that way and you agree with that, uh, that kinda wording, I've got some signature pages for you to sign off that I can attach to it.
So, I'd, I'd accept a motion, uh, entertain a motion, uh, to approve. Special permit modification number three as amended, uh, per Tom Fadalis.
So be.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Oh, do I have to close the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, it's not out to have one.
All right, so any discussion? No, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we need one member to sign, and since you didn't bring your notary stuff, you can be the member, Mary, and, uh, Attorney Ford has very kindly agreed to stay and notarize the signature. Thank you, Mike. It took longer than I expected.
I signed this voluntarily for its stated purpose. Oh, I have to sign, like, everything?
Well, yeah, I, I did four of them, 'cause there's multiple copies of them. Well, it's a meeting on December 6th, which is mainly targeted at, uh, dealing with the Mashpee Commons master plan, then there would be one on the 20th of December.
You should come on the 6th.
Why?
'Cause it's a, it's, it's a.
Mary E., right?
Yeah. It's a visionary. It's like a charrette. You should bring all your business partners. It'll be fun.
While you're, while you're dealing with that, uh, for the December 6th agenda, all I have on it is new business Mashpee Commons public visioning meeting number three and Charlie Riley's billings.
Yeah. He kills me, too.
Whatever, there's various people that need copies of these things, including the one needs to be recorded.
They just need copies.
And it goes to the clerk, one keeps us, we keep, and one goes to the building inspector.
So, all right, so December 6th, the only thing we have on is Mashpee Commons?
And Charlie's bill. Now, my question is if somebody comes in and, in between and wants to be on that agenda, what do you want me to do? Example, uh, let's use the example of, say, an A&R plan that wants to come in and file.
Um, is there, is, would you, would you like to start fifteen minutes before seven o'clock?
No, I wouldn't.
No, okay.
I know, it depends on the board, what you wanna do.
I think if there's an A&R, we can squeeze that in.
I think, I think the advertising Mashpee Commons, but I was already talking about seven o'clock on the, on the 6th, so I'm.
Charlie, you coming on the 6th? Are you gonna participate in, uh, charrette?
I'm gonna present you with some bills.
It's Christmas time. You need to buy presents.
Yeah. Mama needs a new pair of shoes.
Yep, you know it.
So, my only thought with it is if somebody files something.
Yeah.
That the board needs to receive the filing.
Yeah.
Whether they wanna file an A&R or, say, a special permit, modification, or whatever, uh, and they file with the clerk, I'd have to put that on the agenda, but then you just schedule it for, you know, another date. Even A&R, you can continue to the next meeting, but it may have to be on the agenda for quick action.
Okay.
Haven't got any yet, but I'm just saying.
And the room is not gonna be set up like this. Well, we're not gonna sit up here.
Really?
It's gonna be tables. If anybody wants to come a little early, oh, not you. If anybody wants to come a little bit early so we can move around the chairs and the tables.
Has that been, have you discussed with them how they're gonna set up the room?
I can if you want.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we would have to. There's, we don't have a lot of tables like they had at the library. So, maybe somebody's gotta set up here, and I think there's about four, maybe five of those, and then the big table in the back, as far as that kinda thing goes.
I think we should give up this dais. Put citizens out.
You'll probably need it, you'll probably need it to.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
You probably need it to open your meeting and you, you'll have your minutes and that sort of thing to get started with, and then you can move around later. And good luck to the television person to follow it around.
Tom, you owe me. I'll talk to you.
Okay. So, you've only got a month and a half to collect.
Yeah, I know.
Bye.
All right. You're all set.
All set. Thank you so much for coming in.
Appreciate it, guys.
Right, see ya.
I'm trying to get in here on the 6th, so hopefully you can see us.
Oh, that, that'll be great. That'd be great. All right, so, uh.
David, can I get your information from Tom?
Sure.
Or if you have a car mechanic.
Bye. All right, so reports from members.
Uh, don't forget, you had a public hearing that you continued to, eight oh five, that you haven't got through yet.
Public hearing is driving me crazy.
This one should go quick, since it's the same issue with the other one.
Okay, so the chair opens up. Public hearing pursuant to provisions of Mash General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q, eighty-one Q. The Mashpee Planning Board will conduct a public hearing regarding amendment to the board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land on Wednesday, November fifteenth at seven thirty, now eight twenty-five, in Mashpee Town Hall. Said amendments revising Section seven, uh, D, adding a requirement for notice to military organizations on Joint Base Cape Cod may be viewed at the office of the town clerk or the town planner at the Mashpee Town Hall submitted by Mary E. Wagan Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. The publication dates were Friday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, and Friday, November third, two thousand seventeen. Okay.
All right, so you have a three-page, uh, provision of the section of your subdivision reg, Section seven, indicating, uh, on the second page of it, in addition to, uh, Section D, which is relative to notice, and it's in, uh, it'll look like this on the front.
Yeah.
The one that's stapled. All right, so if you look at the second and third pages of that, that's where the language has been inserted, that in addition to projects fly within the JBCC notification zone that I showed you later, and I have the map of, uh, um, they'll send, send notice to these, uh, military organizations on Joint Base Cape Cod. Again, exactly the same issue as with the special permit regs.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this proposed amendment?